The pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor, Congressman?
Here.
Councilmembers, Dave Dillon?
Here.
Andy Larson?
Here.
Norris Johnson?
Here.
Cory Patterson?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, but before I entertain the motion, we have Resolution 2059 concerning the Burnsville project to add on to it, so that resolution will be added, and letter S will be deleted from the Veterans Memorial Construction Project. We put that on the October meeting. So those will be deleted. Is there any other additions that anybody would like? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm ready.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the approval of the minutes of the August 20th meeting, the approval of bills, Resolution 2051 donations to the Veterans Memorial, Resolution 2052 assessing hauling costs, Resolution 2053 assessing unpaid modern sewer, and Resolution 2054 donations to the trails. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Discussion on that. There's a couple items that Tammy and I talked about today on the minutes on the last page. Tammy rewrote that. Do you want to read how we rewrote that, Tammy, or do you have that? Wally?
It was to Mary Mickelson, add to her job duties and place as full-time employee. Motion by Johnson approved the added duties and to be full-time.
And that's the amendment of what we discussed. So I entertain a motion to change that. So... Second. Any further discussion on that? Any other discussion on any of the consent agendas? Let me, I don't think I have any others than that. Hearing none? All in favor of the amended motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries. Citizen form? Is there anybody, Jeff, who wishes to speak? Is he here?
Is anybody else out there?
Is Jeff out there?
No.
Is there? Okay, not here, Jeff? Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council?
I would.
We just state your name and...
My name is Roxanne Garrett with Jim's Malacca Disposal. Jim is here with me, and Jesse is as well. We have come before you to ask for an extension on our current contract for the garbage services with the city of Malacca. I have a letter, if I may, just give me a follow you. A little history on us. We bought Jim's Malacca Disposal, June 1st, 1994, from Russ and Betsy Hill. At that time, on June 1st, we had a contract with the city of Malacca for our garbage services. At that meeting, we had rates that were approved by the city, the current city council at that point in time. Six to nine months afterwards, we were able to decrease our garbage rates as Jim negotiated with our landfills to increase what we were paying for tipping fees. In that time, we've been in business for 26 years. We have not increased our rates with the city of Malacca residents or businesses in that time. I like today, when I was thinking about it, to state it's a quarter of a century that we have done that, and we're very proud of that. We did have an economic downturn from 2006 to 2011, when it started coming back. At that time, all of your vendors, anybody who got bills, would see that there was a fuel service charge and other fees that, or businesses added to our bills. We never did that. We took it as, our customers are already hurting, the economic times were bad, we were in a recession, and to burden our customers further, what we did was change on how we were doing business and worked smarter and harder, so we didn't have to pass that on to our customers. Our proposal is, the rates will stay the same, or an extension of a four-year contract. We are going to be implementing, or plan to be implementing, a recycling cart service curb side. Right now, we currently have tubs, and they're an 18-gallon tub for recycling. We have two guys that go out on the route, they empty the tubs into the rear load of a trash truck, but it is all recycling, we take it to market in Shakopee. What we want to do is have a 65-gallon cart with a different color lid to each household that wants recycling, and we'll use an automated truck to dump the carts and then take it to market when the truck is full. Anybody have any questions for us?
Well, do you think that the recycling is the same as county has, the trailers, you just throw everything together?
Yeah.
Ours is, yeah, ours is the same way. And it is an older garbage truck that we use, but it does go to market in Shakopee. And when we take it to market, we have between six and seven ton in that truck. But it is a long ways to go, it's an hour and a half one-way, and that's with no traffic. Yep, so, but we take, Norris, for your question, I'm sorry, we take plastics numbers one through seven, tin, aluminum cans, newspapers, cardboard, class, or plastics, did I forget one? What is that?
Glass.
Glass. Brown, clear, and the dark green glass they want. And no lids off. Before, we were lids off, no, they want them on. They said anything smaller than your fist is garbage. So when we had, when we were doing the recycling for the county, we wanted to get as much in that contactor as possible, so we had lids off, so the bottles would squish. This facility does not want the lids off, they want them on, because then it's all recycled.
And then also paper, did you say paper?
Paper, newspapers, you know, junk paper, no shredded paper, it clogs the screen, that is garbage. Yep, no, they do not want that. So, we suggest to people to tear their name off of personal information and just shred that little bit, and then to throw them the rest away. Same with your pizza boxes for cardboard, if you have cheese or sauce, cut those spots out and recycle the rest of the cardboard, so the majority of it can't be recycled. Anything else? Well, we look forward to hopefully continuing our contract with the city and hope for another quarter-century.
Do we want to do any action this evening, or have a ring?
You can't under open forum.
Okay. So this will be on the October meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then present the form. The other thing I'd like to look at in October, along with that, and sit down and talk to you, and also Damian about that, is licensure for garbage haulers and boxes, but we can talk about that at a later time. So, because I know some cities have a bigger licensure fee for this, and we haven't visited that fee for a long time. Nothing gets their service, but I think the licensure fee should be a little bit bigger, and we should visit about that prior. And that way, we can regulate if there's anything going on outside of our contract with the garbage haulers. Okay? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, name and... Can you come up here instead, or?
You can just come up here and say it.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, the name and...
Bronak Franklin, with Republic Services, the Trash and Recycling Company.
Okay.
We are out of soft graphics.
Okay.
Sorry, I kind of sound kind of muffled right now, but we would like for you to put the Trash and Recycling out of bid. We believe we could be very competitive. We offer all of the items that they listed for recycling, as far as plastics, cardboard. We just want an opportunity to be able to serve you, and serve your neighbors over in Foley, and we believe we can do a great job here.
Did you just get the Foley contract?
Yes.
Okay. How long ago?
First of the year.
First of the year.
I see.
That'll be a decision we'll make at October meeting then, too, if we're going to put it out for contract or not.
Is there anything I can bring or that I can get to you at this point?
Not at that time, because that decision would be made, because we are not going to put it out for bids at this time.
Okay.
So, that's where we stand as a council, half-stood.
Okay.
But thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me, appreciate it.
Okay.
But how many, Republic Services?
Is that the one based in Wisconsin?
Yes.
Okay. And you serve anything beyond Wisconsin and Minnesota?
Yes, we're down in the Twin Cities as well, St. Paul area, Minneapolis area.
No, but other than Wisconsin and Minnesota?
Yes, we're throughout the country, yes, sir.
Oh, you are, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Well, thank you so much for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else for open forum?
Pete?
Yes.
Jeff Hanson?
Yes.
I, I was, I heard a rumor, and I was understanding, and just kind of confirmed it, too, that you're thinking about putting more garbage haulers, licensing more garbage haulers in the Malacca area?
Ah, that's, that's what he was asking about, about the possibility of having more than one garbage hauler to go out for bids, and that's a decision that the council will make in October.
Okay.
And that's what I just told him.
Because you would have to change your ordinance.
Yes.
Along with that. I, I don't know if I would be here in the October meeting, but I do want to express my thoughts as a resident here, is that having more than one garbage hauler within a small town in Malacca, I think it's going to put a lot of pressure on our streets, noise, and how do you regulate that? I mean, who's going to, are you going to get more than just one, one, you get two, three? Who are you going to, if there's street repairs to be done, who are you going after? Are you going to put it back on the residence and tax form to repair these streets because they're damaged? You know, these are the questions that maybe you want to take a look at when you try to make your own kind of decision there, because it's, I personally don't want to pay any more taxes.
Oh, I totally agree with you. And those are all questions that over the years, that we've had tackled even before Jim brought out from Russ. We tackled that on the council back then. Those same type of questions and those same concerns, and that will be part of the discussion, I'm sure, in October, but thanks for your input. Is there anything else?
Yeah, there, and the representative of Pete's, we have, you know, an ordinance like what you have, they'll be only allow two, one is Jim's and the other is Allen.
Okay.
And there's only ones. But we have seen, I've seen other towns where they've had more than one hauler and the streets are totally wrecked. I mean, it's kind of scary in these small towns. The streets aren't made for, that's how you use. And we've had, I think, in the years that I've lived in Malacca here, and been dealing with Jim for the last 29 years, it's very hard for me, it's been, you know, I can't complain. Because he does a great job, and he's got hairbrushes, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob, thank you.
Any other subjects, or anything on that subject, or anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to the employee recognition of years of service. Tammy, you want to take care of that?
Yes, absolutely. Hopefully, we have a few of them here tonight. Is Brandon Armstrong here? Nope.
And how many years?
And he's been here for five years. My friend Julie Soffer, probably not here, she's probably working at the liquor store, but she's also been here for five years. Glenn Rasmussen?
You want me to come to you?
No. No. So that is two of you. And your five-year pen?
It's pretty bad, but at least she's worth a mask.
Thank you so much. Rock Holton? Mark Herter? Warren Johnson?
This is of appreciation for your ideas and services, thank you so much. We appreciate everything everybody does here. Patrick Shaw, feel I'm able to be here tonight, so they let me know. But he has 15 years of service. So he's a little police officer, and he's a long time veteran. Much appreciation to all of the staff. I know a lot of you out in the community really don't see what we do and how much we do in a day. We're shifting gears, almost on an hourly basis, something's happening in the city, and we have to act really fast. And the staff here that I work with are so responsive and work really hard to make sure that everything is done very effectively, and I appreciate them so much for all their hard work. Thank you very much.
And on behalf of the council, I thank all of them and all the workers, too, because that's one of our number-one assets in the city, is our workers. Lubin on, request for communications. Ryan, you're on.
All right.
We have the audit to go over tonight.
Yeah. Hi, well, my name's Ron Schmidt, I'm there with Schlatter, Runner and Company, been there about 10 years now, and I'm going to be walking us through the summary of your 2019 audit, so we're looking back a little ways back to 2019.
Do you want to turn that a little bit back? Don't turn on that little thing? No, no, because we have the book, right?
Yeah, yeah, so you have three books in front of you. The two that have the hardcover, those are the formal reports, with a hard blue cover, and the one with the clear cover, that's the summarized version, that we're going to watch throughout the slide, and that just summarizes the other two reports. So that way, we don't have to look through every whole page.
You get rid of that one, honey, that's an extra.
Okay, so, we're going to start out...
Which book do you have?
I want the clear covered one.
The white one?
Right underneath, yep, that one right there. All right, so flip into the first page, the past cover page, and where we say audit process and opinion.
That we're going to have.
Oh, it's amazing. Lots, thank you for your...
We're going to get the same angle as that.
Audio.
I'll hold it, huh? That's probably okay, huh?
Yeah. Okay, so real high level, just going to talk about what do we actually do during an audit, and what is the audit process consisted of? So, in general, an audit consists of us obtaining your financial data, your records from throughout 2019, and then we perform a number of procedures over this information for the purpose of expressing an opinion on your financial statements. And these procedures consist of various things, there's inquiries with staff and outside vendors and third parties, various analytics where we may develop an expectation based on, you know, comparable cities or prior year activity, and compare that to actual results. Then lots and lots of detailed testing, sampling, reviewing vendor invoices, you know, contacting the county, state, et cetera. Based on the results of these procedures, we're able to express an opinion, and actually being a city, and then you have multiple funds, we express an opinion on each one of those fund individuals. So we have something a little bit different this year, you know, for all of your funds except the liquor fund, we do have a clean, unmodified opinion. And for the liquor fund, you would have that clean, unmodified opinion, except the timing of the audit this year made things a little bit complicated. So because we weren't contracted with you until after the end of the year, we weren't able to go up to the liquor store and perform our usual procedures of doing a physical account and reviewing the inventory that was actually on hand at the end of the year. So because of that, we have a paragraph in the report saying, "The liquor store looks good to us, however, we weren't able to extend our procedures quite to the extent that we normally do." So we've had to do this a number of times in the past with other cities we've worked with. There's no real repercussions, there haven't been in the past, and we looked into any regulatory authorities as far as, if you had debt at the liquor store, maybe that would be something where the lender would be concerned about this, but you don't have any debt.
Tammy, in the past, did the auditors go up to the liquor store and take inventory?
No.
Or, whatever that...
Okay, so, moving on to the next page, that's kind of the overall results, that's the opinions. The next page here, we have other required communications, just a high level of how the audit went. And, you know, in general, especially considering how it was our first year auditing you, and we're doing entirely remotely, I'd say the audit went very smoothly, considering that. So we had good communication with management, they did a great job getting us what we needed. Nothing unusual noted as far as activity or accounting policies or procedures we thought were strange, everything looked pretty standard and in line with our expectations. We did have one change in accounting principle this year, GASB 84, government accounting standard. It's related to fiduciary activities and how we evaluate these fiduciary activities. So basically, cash that you hold for other entities that isn't actually the city's cash. And with this, we looked a little bit closer at your motor vehicle fund, and we come to the conclusion that that is actually fiduciary activity, that's something that you are conducting that operation on behalf of the state of Minnesota. So, it doesn't really have much of an impact internally for you, it's just in the report, if you were to look through the big report that I gave you, you would see the motor vehicle fund broken out onto its own separate page, and it's going to tell you fiduciary activity. And then the final item on this page, it says significant estimates down the top, significant estimates for the net pension liability and balances. This is one of the balances that's in your government life financials. Every year, it's determined by an actuarial study, there's just a lot of estimates that go into it, so it fluctuates a lot, and the state pushes that number up to us. Okay. Next page says internal controls over financial reporting at the top. And basically, as part of the audit, we don't only look at your numbers, we also look at processes and procedures that are in place, and the structure that you have in place can get you to those numbers. And that's where we have a few items here related to internal controls to report to. And most, for the most part, these are all really standard, these are pretty consistent with what we see at the other cities we audit. We have one here that's a little bit normal, we'll talk about it in a minute. But the first one on the page here, it says audit adjustments, various audits, various adjustments are recorded during the audit process. So as we're performing our procedures, if we come across something that, you know, a year-end balance needs to be recorded to get your accrued payroll, or your accounts payable, or some sort of receivable on the books, we will assist with that adjustment so that we can still get you to that clean opinion that I talked about. And it's very common, because a lot of cities operate throughout the year on more of a cash basis, you know, you receive the cash, you record the revenue. But at the end of the year, you have to convert everything, do these year-end adjustments via the accrual basis, where you're recording receivables and all of these balances, these year-end balances. And when we assist with those adjustments, that's when we have to have this, I can make clear. The next one that's listed is prior period adjustments. This one's the one that's a little bit more unusual. This was the result of us identifying a few things during the audit, a few balances actually in the 2018 financials that we needed to revisit and make some corrections to. So, in order for our 2019 financials to be correct, we need to start from a, from a good starting point. So when we see issues with the end of the year 2018 balances, we have to correct those so that we can start in a good spot for 2019. So there were a few areas like that where we made some corrections, and as a result, we have to have this financial report. And the next two there, segregation of duties, we'll all start with that one. This one's extremely common, plastic segregation of duties. This, I think, pretty much every city that we work with has this finding. It's just saying that because your city is only so large, and you only have so many people involved in the accounting process, you've got certain people that can't have the ability to access your whole accounting system, and because of this, you just have to have whatever controls you can in place as part of oversight, and just be aware that this is going to be a scenario. And I think, considering the size of your staff, you do have good controls in place, but there's still always that risk there of some sort of overriding. And finally, we have financial state of preparation. This is because we, as a third party, do prepare the financial statements, the reports in front of you on every path, and whenever that's the case, there's, the idea is there's a slightly tightened risk that, you know, there could be a missed disclosure or something like that, so that's not really a pretty stable kind of report. Okay, next page here, Minnesota yield compliance. So this is something that the OSAA, the office of the state auditor, has us look into, and they have us review your processes for all sorts of areas, like how you contract and bid for services and projects, where do you keep your funds, you know, investments or bank accounts are they in, are there any transactions or items where there's conflicts of interest, what kind of debt do you have, et cetera, et cetera. So we review all these checklists, review all these statutes that the state tells us to, and we look for areas of non-compliance, and this year, we didn't have any findings in this area, so it's good to be this is not a problem. Okay, with that, we're going to finally get into the numbers bit here. So, we're going to start out with the general fund here, actually, the next few pages go over to the general fund, and this is just real high level on this page. So we've got 2018 on the left, 2019 actual results in the middle there, and then the 2019 budget is on the right-hand side. Red, blue is revenues, red expenditures, and green is fund balance. So this is just your general fund, and we'll get into a little bit more detail going forward, but high level, your revenues came in over budget, actually by about $267,000. Expenditures came in really close to budget, they were over by about $23,000. And then the other sources that you see there, about $117,000, that's transfers from other funds and then proceeds from the sale of assets. Gives you an overall decrease in fund balance for the year of above $12,000, which compared to the budget, you actually budgeted for a decrease of $231,000. So you ended the year with a fund balance of $1,878,000. Moving on to the next slide, before we get into detail for some of those revenues and expenses, here we have your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your annual budget to the general fund. So this is a commonly used ratio to kind of gauge, you know, where should our fund balance be at? This ratio makes, allows you to be able to compare yourself to other cities of different sizes and see how much your annual expenditures kind of have sitting in your reserves at the end of the year. And this ratio dropped off a little bit from 2018 to 2019. You can see it was about 86.5% to 2018, dropped down to about 80.5% from 2019. So overall, actually, pretty flat. There's no current policy in place as far as what a minimum should be. Recommendations I've seen from the state, 35 to 50%.
And we're at 86?
Yep.
Yeah, because we've always been told we have a healthy fund balance.
Pretty healthy fund balance, and I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Next couple of slides here, still on the general fund, since this is where so much of your activity occurs. First, we've got your revenues here, broken out in greater detail, various categories. The next page about expenditures. But once again, 2018 is the blue, 2019 is red, and then the budget is in green. I'm not going to go through each category, just touch on a couple where the difference is between budget and actual, where it will get bigger. So the real big bars you see there, the third to the left, that's intergovernmental revenues. This is your funding from the state for the most part and other governmental agencies. This came in, actually, greater revenues than anticipated because you had revenues from the state for your airport and then also some police state aid that exceeded what you had anticipated.
That's also the year the ILGA got back up to the level of 2008, you know?
Oh, really?
Yeah, alright, sure. Because there was a big jump in our ILGA in 2019.
Yeah, so that could be a true factor as well. The other item here, your investments, your investment income was actually quite a bit higher than anticipated. So that was pretty straightforward with your investments, you just had gains and an increase in your market value that wasn't anticipated. And then your contributions and donations, the second from the right, you had some fire association donations. That's mostly what is contributing to that variance there. Alright, next page, same exact graph, but this is your expenditures in the general fund. So same layout, the first category on the left, this is your general government expenditures. This was actually under budget by about $76,000. Just less repairs and maintenance, less insurance costs, actually, this is the one that decreased from budget. And various other items that came into the budget. On the other hand, the next item, the next category there jumped up a little bit, the public safety. You know, I talked about the decrease in pro general government insurance, or workers' comp insurance. It's actually mostly what like increases there and their public safety, workers' comp, the police department. And, you know, the rest of these categories actually came in pretty close, just helping with the capital overlay on the far right-hand side. So this is just because you had projects, you had projects, purposes going on during the year. And some of these, I think, too, that were, you know, the fire truck even a little bit higher than what was budgeted. You had some sidewalks, paving, and things like that. Alright, and then, you know, you just want to keep it simple and you want to know what's your cash balance at 2018 compared to 2019? That's the slide. So 2018, you had a cash balance of a little over 1.85 million. My root did only drop off $3,000, so it's like very close to, despite the track. So it's just flat on your cash.
Wait, the cash balance is going to be in $3,000 for the whole year, that's pretty darn good.
Yeah, yeah, you got a pretty flat here as far as the general. Okay, so next couple of pages here, we're going to go through your other governmental funds and we're going to go through this a lot quicker. The activity in these is a lot more standard for the while for the most part. Okay, so debt service fund, activity in here is various. Debt service fund, the revenues here consists of taxes and special expenses coming in, it's all on a set schedule for the purposes of then being able to pay that debt principal and interest. And, you know, like I said, everything in here is pretty scheduled. You've got an overall increase, your fund balance is about $72,000, ended the year at $757,000. Because it's all of your debt service funds that's binding into one debt system, that's all of your governmental debt. Capital projects, this fund has a little bit of different activity this year. You see there's the other sources of $553,000. That's the bond proceeds from your 2018 bond issuance. And then that's offsetting your expenditures up above on the far right-hand side. You had expenditures which were extremely positive, about $524,000. So you pretty much spent all your bond proceeds. Overall increase in fund balance was about $289,000. And then we've got a couple new funds in 2019. So these are your direct improvement funds. So these are, this is where your donations are housed, the direct donations.
216 and 217.
216 and 217.
Return to them exactly.
Sure, sure. So the 216 fund, which is the one on the left, this is the fund that housing the investments that we're doing. These are the investments that were transferred to the state. The 217 fund that's on the right, this is the $200,000 donation and then a $250,000 donation, those both are minus 217.
Is there any problem with this year moving that first one in 217 over the 216 as we did even?
That's absolutely fine.
The first one in 217? I don't know, I know the one. It doesn't matter when we move, because it moved that.
Yeah, I mean, from my standpoint, if you wanted to be combining these funds completely, you could. And I know internally, you want to keep them separate and then...
Yes, because of what they're to be used for.
Yep, absolutely. But yeah, so the revenues that you see here in both of these funds, 216 and 217, pretty much entirely donations and then subsequent receivable donations, the interest and investment earnings that you earned on. The expenditures that you see there, that's the projects that you then started paying for with the estate as far as part improvements and what else is going on, donations, you have part improvements, trails, hockey rent, all...
Public quarters.
Public services.
Police.
Yep.
And that should now make me better.
Exactly, yeah, so that's what's falling into this category. So at the end of the year, you have a remaining fund balance here of about $450,000 in the 216 and then about $450,000 remaining in 217.
And that's at the end of 2019, now at the end of 2020.
Correct, I'm sure you had more expenses in 2020 and it probably worth that by the time. And this is, once again, 2018 and 2019. For all those categories we just talked about, this is just your cash at 2018 and then the change to 2019. So debt service, the top there, slight increase there, kind of reflects what happened with the fund balance. Your 216 and 217 direct funds, both of those, of course, shot way up because they didn't have any balance since they came to 2018. And then your capital project funds, remaining pretty flat. And then we've got that non-major category, this is, I'm not going to go through in detail about that, so your pivot funds, you've got PDA, etc. It's all your remaining smaller ones. Alright, so we're down to just the proprietary funds, just your water, sewer, like the heat flows. We're going to have one slide on here. So your water fund, 2018 compared to 2019 again, operating revenues is in the blue, operating expenses is in the red, and then we have a new change in net positions this year, this is a circle. So comparing 2018 to 2019, operating revenues are down about $5,000. Operating expenses are also down about $34,000. So overall, you had operating income for 2019 of about $132,000. Combining this with this non-operating activities such as investment earnings, miscellaneous items, interest on your debt, it brings you to that overall increase in net position of about $160,000. Same slide for the sewer fund on the next page. I'm just going to lick my face. Sewer fund, actually, kind of similar story, operating revenues very similar from 2018 to 2019, up about $3,800. Operating expenses, on the other hand, were actually up about $20,000. It's increased expenses here for materials and supplies and other services. So overall, you had operating income of about $27,000 this year. You have some interest and investment earnings, some minor miscellaneous items there under non-operating operating expenses. And you've got an overall increase in net position of about $44,000 this year. So upward trend in both of those funds. And finally, we have your liquor fund. Liquor fund, you have, well, we've got a net sales here to start with. So instead of operating revenue, this is net sales. So this is your overall sales, minus costs, goods sold, this is a cost of product. So your net sales in 2019 had a decrease of about $4,000 as of previous year. Operating expenses, so your salaries and compensation and all of your operating costs, this increased about $18,000 as of previous year. So you had an overall operating income of about $144,000 as of 2019. With your other non-operating items, investment earnings for the most part, and then that $65,000 is actually a transfer of cash out of the liquor fund to the general fund. Factoring all of that in, after that transfer, you still had an increase in your net position here of about $95,000. So that's each one of your funds. Oh, we do have one more slide here with those same three funds, just showing cash from 2018 to 2019. Slight increases in any one of those three funds, little more significant of an increase in the liquor fund. Okay, so we've got three of your funds. The next page here, we talked about your government-wide assets and the government-wide likely leading on the following page. This is just where we wrap all of those funds together, just looking at it really high level. If you were to look through the biggest of the books that I can give you, there's a separate set of financials in there, government-wide, city-wide financials, where we wrap every group together. And in there, we also include things like your capital assets, your infrastructure, et cetera, your long-term debt balances are in there. So comparing 2018 to 2019, your assets, we have current assets, cash, receivables, our short-term items on the left-hand side in the blue. And then capital assets, so your infrastructure, your equipment and buildings, et cetera, that's the red and the right. Increases in both of these, actually. Current assets, that increases mostly because of the cash you have on the end of those financials, as to the story there. And then, you know, you have that significant capital overlay every year. You had mind-going improvements in the infrastructure, that's what's causing that increase there for your capital asset, your capital, non-earned category as well. Next page, we have your total liabilities for the city. So this is broken down again, if I mean, current liabilities in blue, debt to non-earned items in the red. And I broke out the net liability, we'll talk about that later, we'll talk about that in a minute. But you can see overall, actually, your debt is just as well the same as what it was last year. It's really close for 2018 and 2019. So despite issuing those bonds in 2019, that kind of got offset by the principal payments made on all of your other debt and kind of netted out to a net zero change in your liability, certainly close. The net pension liability there is a reminder, that's your proportionate share of the liability that the state calculates each year for Para for the pension plans. So they do a statewide actuarial study to figure out what the net pension liability is with the entire plan statewide. And then they give you a piece of that and they help you report it in your financial statements. And it's not something that you ever are going to have to pay, it's just an on-demand liability. If that's smaller governmental organizations who've actually closed the doors and gone out of business, and this just goes away, it's not even a real liability.
Is that, I figure it includes the fire department or is that just...
It does now, yep, it doesn't, it includes the, you know, the fire department's part of the statewide volunteer fire fighter plan. Well, that's to Para as well, so it does factor in the fire.
So that happens within this company?
It is, yeah. So yeah, it's the fire plan, it's the police plan as well, they have their own set of plan for Para. And then it's the general employees' plan for Para as well, so those three plans are that.
Is there any way of knowing how much each of those plans are?
It is in the financials.
It is, okay.
There's some footnotes, there's actually pages and pages of footnotes that we have to put in there related to pension plans. And you could find it in one. Yeah, so that's your government-wide asset liability. One final slide here, just showing your debt at the end of the year, 2018 and 2019. Breaking it up by what is your governmental debt, so the debt that's being financed by taxes and expenses compared to the debt that's being financed by business-type activities, so your water access and funds. And you can see governmental funds that have increased a little bit because of the 2019 bonds that you did through stream improvements. And then your business-type water sewer debt, you've got some payments made on that that dropped off. And you can see the ranking of the charter days, those are the shoes that's on the bottom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you, thank you. In overall, would you say this is a good shaping?
I believe so, yeah, I think you've got a pretty strong financial position. And like I said, despite the unusual circumstances this year, the audit went smoothly, so that helped the operating as well.
The only thing I want to add is, it could have added straight on our administration and our treasurer doing it so late, not only you and the operator, but also preparing our budget for next year. Now, I don't want the 2019 office to stay.
Wow, I'm sure next year, you're...
So maybe you and the... Thank you, I'll put another with you, I mean, work with you.
No, I hear you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Luana, do we have to have a motion to accept the hour?
How many?
I'll say it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And forty.
Any other discussion? All of you, there's a second thing now, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Both say aye? Motion carries. I am now going to close the men meeting and open a public hearing meeting on the debt, senior housing, and I did not accidentally, who's going to be presenting tonight?
Kathy Youngquist.
Okay. And what this is, yeah, for you people in, you could kind of explain what it's all about, I'll let you.
Okay, I'll go with it. I've been here before, Kathy Youngquist, and I was working for Dylan, care at the time, which is with the nursing home here in the country, so we merged or affiliated with another company and our community name is Cassia. And so I kind of go way back, I started in Princeton 30 years ago and stuck with it, so I'm still here. We are working on some refinancing for one of our senior apartments with our new group, Cassia, it's down in Burnsville. And I'm just trying to take advantage of lower interest rates and trying to keep our rents down, keep things a little more affordable for the seniors. So we have an opportunity to refinance a couple loans with a bank. And the way we can do that with taxes that we have to work with a city or a county, some kind of government agency could be the issuer for us. And then the bank treats it like they don't have to pay taxes on the interest that we pay them, so they give us a mortuary. Usually, if you guys want to... Usually, if you guys want to use that, it's a federal designation to get that lower rate. Every city in the US gives $10 million opportunity every year to use it. Great, if you don't, you can assign it to nonprofits like us, if you're not putting it in, and then we can, we can use a little bit. So we're looking for, not to exceed $3 million, but I'm quite sure what we need. We are doing two other issues with two cities down, one city's area for $10 million each. And we needed a little bit more to refinance $10 more million. So I think we've worked, I know we've worked with you in the past, in that a lot of times the city doesn't use the code $10 million, and has been willing to assign some of that designation to us, and we really appreciate that. And we're here to ask for up to $3 million for this particular deal here in 2020. We're on schedule to close on the loan at the end of October.
I thought you were asking for a million.
Well, I think we probably only needed a million. Our resolution says up to $3 million on here. Do you, are you using some of your solos this year?
No.
When is the year?
It's now, the fiscal year.
Fiscal year? So it's 2020?
Yeah, it's a calendar year designation.
And there's no risk to the city, I'd like to add, brought forward, that people that don't know it, it's all, all, all of you and all we're doing. Now, are you still associated with ELO?
I am, yes.
Okay, and so is this Burnsville project?
Right.
Okay. And so that's why you come to us, because there's another entity that you're associated here in town.
Yep, yeah, we have a connection with Malacca by serving the community here.
So on that resolution, you're asking for $3 million now?
Up to $3 million, we may not use that much. And whatever we don't use would be available for the city or for you to assign to another nonprofit or somebody. It has to be between now and the end of the year. But that $10 million expires in December, but then you get another $10 million next year.
Then we can use for nonprofits or whatever.
Right, use it for city projects or for nonprofits.
Question to you, in, in the literature, you had us have any joint powers agreement with two other cities?
Right.
We've never done that before, and I don't know if we want another, kind of explain that. I, do we have to enter into joint powers with them, for you to get a best?
Yes, we do, and it doesn't really tie you to them at all. What it does is, because there's a $10 million limit per city, and we need $21.
Yeah.
We needed $10 million from the city of Hampton, $10 million from Landville Village, and probably just $1 million from Malacca to get to our total.
Okay, but that didn't, that didn't irritate for work, so why wouldn't we have to have a joint event or joint powers agreement?
That's a good question, and I'm not an attorney, but it's part of the federal tax.
Okay, Damian?
Well, I'd have to research it further, but I don't believe, I don't believe that in order for the funding to be available, you need to have multiple entities for you to get that dollar amount. And the responsibility of, because you would be tied together, it's a sort of joint party agreement. That's how you get to the $21 million, or what you're getting. I don't know if you can do multiple independent requests that they're doing. They have to do it jointly to ensure that the facilities are properly, usually with all the resources.
Is that a government or a bank thing?
Okay.
Okay, I'm just saying, because we've never...
Well, I think we might have done one way back, I've been around 30 years, and I think we did one.
Well, I've been around 30 years too.
Princeton and Malacca, Princeton and Malacca, I think we did one together one time, also way back, because we needed more than a...
So, so we have to sign a joint powers agreement with the other $3,000?
Right.
Other $2,000?
Other $2,000. So the kind of tricky thing is that the project itself is in Burnsville. And Burnsville has spent $10 million, so they wouldn't give us anything. You know, they don't give us money, but they wouldn't give us the designation. So then, they're the host city, and so they have to go to their meeting next week. And then, they're the host, and you guys are part of this joint agreement. So there's actually four cities involved.
Oh, so Burnsville's, that's not in the joint, Burnsville's not named in the joint thing?
Right, right. They'll, they'll have a reservation next week that they have to cast, that says everything's okay. And they're having three cities that are really the sponsors, but they're the hosts, that's where, that's where the project is going. It's all federal law. And it's done to give the taxes down great and, you know.
Okay, any questions of her or anybody?
How long will those cities be in the agreement together?
This is a 20-year mortgage, and so assuming that it doesn't get refinanced, which, well, sometimes it do, it'll be the 20 years. So what we do from our standpoint is, we report to your city finance person every year what the outstanding balance is, so that she can report to the state. And so that's kind of how that keeps going on, is the debt coming reporting.
And in, out of that loan from the whole city, are there any monies coming into the other cities?
No, everything really comes from the bank, but it's really...
Well, they put the bank, they can send us a little money to our private funds.
Yeah, so the bank goes to pay up the other loans. And the cities are really, I would say, a good description of the sponsors. They're sponsors, they're issuers, and they're letting us use their issuing capacity to do this in a passive manner.
At, at one time when we did one of these, I thought we got so much for doing it.
Yeah, I couldn't tell that through, there wasn't a room.
There, there was some for doing, huh?
I don't remember, I don't recall.
I, I don't know if it was through the ELO, or if it was through CMDI when they bought Sanders. But I remember that there was something in it as far as revenue for the city. Do you remember that, Norris?
Yeah, it wasn't very much.
No. But anyway. Okay, I, I just wondered if there's a clause in there, or something in there that the city gets some revenue for doing this.
If you want to charge for something, that's up to you.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't think you had it in the past, but...
I don't, I don't recall ever being a team in the past, because you may have had fees from other entities.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and reopen the council meeting. We can jump ahead in resolutions, numbers, they don't have to be in order, Tammy?
Yeah, they don't have to be in order, but it would be to approve the original purchase, Resolution 2059.
Yes. And, and I don't see on our thing where there's a resolution, 2058.
2058?
Oh, I see it now, I see, never mind. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2059, and that's what Tammy handed out earlier. So...
Second?
Will this motion include the agreement to purchase?
Agreement of?
Agreement to purchase.
You muffled me.
Agreement to purchase. Those are the two I didn't see in the file.
Okay. And is that stated in here that it includes the agreement of purchase?
Yes.
It, it is part of the resolution?
It's a separate document.
Separate document. So let, let's just approve the resolution, and then let's approve the purchase.
Can I give the motion, who was the motion?
Me.
Yes, thank you. Second?
No, I second.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to purchase. Correct? And, and that's up to $3 million.
Then you are, son?
Yes.
Yours, Jonathan?
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, let's see, let's get down to... Okay, next we have a resolution, 2055 to 70, care acting funds and submitting for COVID-19 expenditures. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, those expenditures are on the back of the motion. Any discussion on any one of those? Those are stuff that had been sent, spent in this last month. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Orders, 468, continuance of the local emergency fund, declaration, immediate emergency declaration. I'll entertain a motion to forego with the first reading. Any discussion on the first reading? Are you getting who's yelling, I mean, who's, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adopt Orders Number 468.
So...
Any discussion on that? This will be good till our next council meeting for additional 30 days or less. So we're within the tagline of our next council meeting. Any other discussions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolutions in 2056 to do a summary of resolutions in 468, I mean, Orders 468. I'll entertain a motion to just do a summary.
So, second?
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we continue to have, continue to have. Resolution 2057, 2021 preliminary budget. I'll, you got a new one in, in front of you on this sheet here? This is treating, that's the highest. Tammy and I had a discussion on the budget that was brought out, and we went on a key, I haven't looked it over, and talked with Tammy, for what was about a half an hour today?
Hour and a half?
Hour and a half, quite a bit, quite a bit of time. We, we, we see a difference between some of the expenses and some of the revenue in office compared to what I compared in the, all of them. So we came to the conclusion that when we did any financial shading, we could keep our levy at the same as we did it for 2020, but just switched around the top of the files, in that we added more in the, I don't see the, oh, up in the public works from the previous year, there's $18,000 that then decreased the general fund there. And we can't do anything about the debt service. But we have less debt service in 2021 by $13,316. So we would ask for the county on the preliminary budget, and we can lower this at any time in December. So we're asking for a total levy of $9,000, uh, nine? $984, start over. $98475, which is the same as last year. Tammy and I went over this quite extensively in the staff.
We did, and indeed I talked about that, and I really want to caution the council, because this creates a zero levy increase. So indeed I talked about, you know, the potential of not increasing your levy at your primary, or at your preliminary budget. If you set it at zero now, you cannot increase it in December. Should something major happen in the city, if you lose contracts, if some major structure fails, different things like that. Also keep in mind that we have $520,000 that we have to pay up to the county this year for water and sewer contracts. That will decrease your cash flow. So I need you to keep that in mind when you think about setting this particular preliminary budget. The original one that you got in August was a 1.71, and we still have a positive balance at the end of that. So with this budget summary that I have prepared, that's a 1.71. So I just want to make sure that council is fully aware that if you can't go backwards in December, I would caution on the side of being prepared for future things that could happen. Because if you can't go backwards, this will actually eat up some of your cash flow. So if you do any street projects, there are no street projects budgeted in this budget summary.
Seal coating uses?
Only seal coating for $118,000. And that's it. We have water sewer lining projects, we have...
And that's the budget?
And sewer cleaning, correct. The only thing that is not in here is a complete street reconstruction project. And I know we talked about that in the August one, there were streets that you wanted to do. If we want to do that, you need to bond for it. Now, that increases your levy anytime you do a street reconstruction project. When you bond for it, it increases your debt. So you need to really think about not making it zero right now, but you can look at it in December, and then decrease it if you wish, but I would caution on that side of not getting it to zero right now.
Now, is there, the LGA gives that? How sure do I need to ask what the number would be?
Well, I spoke with Gary Carlson today in an email, back and forth, and looking at what our LGA is anticipating. Right now, they're seeing possibly nothing that may happen, because they've had two months of really good months. So then the next couple of months will really figure it out by the end of December. So when we pass our final budget in December, we will know more what LGA is going to do. So that's another, first to not giving the zero revenue at this time right now, because those are uncertain factors in your budget. So then you would have to replace that revenue with capital.
Okay, but Tammy, on, on that, back in August, you said that you were assured of that, when I looked at our open numbers.
Those are certified numbers, yeah.
Yes.
But the government...
Then in the memo, you said, oh, we're terrible, we might not get that. Now, you're saying that... Now you're singing a different song than in August.
No, I'm, I'm saying that what we need to do is be cautious.
Okay.
So...
But that's a different song than you and I talked about today. Cause you were all in the paper then, and the reason you were...
I cautioned you on the zero percent.
Okay, but the reason I proposed the zero percent because of what I got in, from you in August and what I got this time, those budgets, those revenues are very, very different.
And they will be.
And I disagree with some of those because all my differences when I went through them, when you're making different statements that I wasn't bringing down because I thought we had this all settled and you were comfortable with this. Same thing that you presented here this afternoon with our talk. And this is kind of irritating me right now.
Well, Pete, you can be irritated and that's fine. I'm looking out for the city's best interest in the long term by the way.
And we just heard, we just heard from the auditor that we had eighty-six percent. So I see no reasons why that we have to even prepare a budget that is on and above what we prepared last year when we know what the county is going to do. I know we shifted the background of that, but I cannot vote for any increase in levy and I would even in December looking at it down from this nine hundred because our people here in town and in last county are overcast. I take nothing about out of town, but I am in it and talking about the city. So that's my stand.
And you can have your...
Except if you approve this now, one forty-seven percent increase, is that, it's not that point I'm saying. We, we still...
No, but I, I...
That's, that's two months away. Uh, I think you could change it. We don't know, maybe, yeah, maybe at this point, uh, these numbers.
But if you can...
We don't know, but the governor, he's made many changes in the last few months. We don't, we don't know. But maybe they'll be different and then, and maybe that's... I'm, I'm all in favor of having a zero levy increase.
I, I'm less than zero, but our people paying for it in August.
Well...
I would do the worst, but if you get one point seven now, we can handle it, but if you do zero now, you can't handle it.
Yeah.
But I meant to be, if you change it later, lower the list.
Which we could.
Which we could. So...
This is the one that one point seven, blah, 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 really, yeah, any of it.
It's only seven thousand dollars, which I don't think, that's not much of a cushion for our... But I, it doesn't, you know, why I... Uh, it doesn't change, it's not, we're not setting eleven by resolution.
But...
Right, we set the cap.
No, you are setting eleven by resolution.
Yes.
Right, we can reduce that.
In December.
Right.
But when I get the changes like this on what I, and I go over it, and I have ever since I've been on the council, and the nurses have made comments, I go over this. I've been, I've spent sixteen hours on this pack this week, just going over and seeing the difference between the information I got in August and the information I got in August, and I tell them like what I've seen.
So Pete, what you got in August was a work session. We have two months of additional data. Why don't you think that would change?
Well, with, with, with any, with any business, revenue goes somewhere more, uh, from eighty thousand to two hundred and twenty dollars down to four hundred and fifty dollars.
Would you want to know why?
Yeah, you can.
Over the last two months, we've gained seventeen thousand in interest on our investments. So yes, when I'm talking with those, in our investments, and I'm looking at what the CDs are, what's callable and where we're going, we are setting excellent with CD.
Okay.
That can't be called.
Then, then they need to sell it. How does this allow you to go out?
It goes down all the time.
That's what it was, that's what it's for.
Usually numbers are supposed to be set in stone, every month and fluctuating. The liquor store has three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars additional revenue.
Okay, so...
Their revenue is going to skyrocket.
Then, then you couldn't report this.
If you transfer more money over, you can't.
Right. And we're setting a good consideration, so there's no basis not to accept a zero percent by maybe from for two thousand, for two thousand twenty-one.
I have never in my twenty-two years have ever seen a city set a zero eleven.
Well, we had a minus, that's the thing. We've had a minus four point eighty percent in...
Those are minus.
I know, two thousand nineteen. We had a minus oh, oh, point four six percent.
But you never set a zero preliminary budget. Those have always been a, a number, and then you decreased it in December. I would recommend that same practice just because the unknown, the unknown can happen so fast.
And if there's more, I know it's up there right now, yeah.
Okay, then, then if you want to look at, uh, casual equipment, since it's two thousand sixteen and some of the people were five thousand for the public works. Now then we went to ten thousand, then they went to eighty thousand, and eighty thousand. And this year we went to thirty-one thousand, and you told me this because of the greater...
Correct.
And that. And that's money you set aside, so we're still setting aside and making payments. You know, and you told me to keep that in the savings, and I had no problem with that, and it's just that they no problem reducing the funds.
What I told you was the only way you can do that is you have to reduce your general.
Yes.
And you say there would be no problem. I cautioned you on not putting it to zero.
And, 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 no, you never, you said it afterward, you said, hey, this is what, are you comfortable with that? I asked if you were comfortable with the nine hundred eighty thousand, four seventy-five the same? And you said that as long as you made that savings, you were comfortable with it, and now I'm picking a different song and I don't like it.
But you need to think about...
No, I didn't want to. I didn't think about how long it would be. We said that a good amount of it. And somebody said two thousand nineteen was eighty-six percent. And three thousand ninety-five percent is good.
So you're okay with reducing your revenue, your capital?
Uh, if we're setting at eighty-six percent in two thousand nineteen, and we had a good year after the lip disorder in two thousand twenty, I don't see any problem with it.
And when you find a capital project, you have to understand it, it's going to be eleven years.
I missed that, Emma. And you were able to pay me care of second street without what I'm providing from a sewer product. And you save all our residents, uh, roughly thirty dollars on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. You know, if we had to buy for that six hundred thousand and then we weren't to get a new street there, it's been a little over the way. You know, even though the county hasn't gotten a bag. I have a problem, so which measures would you want me to call for a motion on?
Are we able to set a one point seven tonight and in December have a zero or less than zero in December?
Yes, law.
Yes.
Sorry, but I think we should set, uh, set a one point seven tonight and give ourselves two more months to get more information and more data and bold points have a probability of, uh, happening, or at least have a possibility of happening.
Wh- what's the one point seven in that, that nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand? Just when we started coming up this afternoon, and now you're taking your story, I'm sorry, I have to follow you there. Is that the way we motion you'd like to make the order?
Uh, yeah, um, I wasn't part of a meeting this afternoon, um, but from whatever in, in council tonight, I believe that giving the council two more months to get more information, get more data, see how things change, uh, with, um, our LGA, with ordinances put out by the governor, with how things are changing on a periodic basis, I would feel more comfortable setting a one point seven tonight and then revisiting it in December and try to work it down to that zero or less than zero at that time when we have more hard data.
So this, this is the adoption of this resolution right here, twenty fifty-seven without any amendments? Is that what you're saying?
That's one point seven.
Correct.
Yep.
So we already had a motion on, no, we didn't.
You have to warn me in the motion.
No, no, no. Before we started discussing, so I'll take the orders, motions, and then just name now the adopted resolution twenty fifty-seven as previously in your pack. Any further discussion? I, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Aye. Motion carries. Calling to a public hearing, uh, oh, but I, I got one comment on that, and I wish I could broaden that on this. Uh, I tried to see what the county was going to do and for information on the, uh, uh, resolution that you just passed, I could not find with the county, uh, what they are going to do, I have challenged the county to come up with a zero uh, relief. The county fee schedule at the September first meeting, they added all fees and also the county is, is going to do a two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five cap improvement. And there is a public hearing on Tuesday, September twenty ninth at the nine AM to review the local sales tax option. So you know they're going to raise all their fees, they're going to take and also review the sales tax that they've put on before, and I'm sure that's going to increase. So when it comes to our next, uh, meeting, uh, I would be prepared to lower the levy that we're asking for so that our citizens have a lack of those. Anyway, uh, I'm calling for a public, uh, hearing to conduct, then, no, I'm sorry, we are... Uh, calling for a public hearing for December seventeenth, uh, two thousand twenty, uh, truth in taxation to discuss the two thousand twenty-one tax, I may be, but I'll entertain a motion. So do we want to tie any time on that before we move, that there's no time stated on this one?
Six thirty PM.
Six thirty PM.
There is on the mobile contact.
Okay.
One second.
I'll say it.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carries. Uh, please let me put our banana in here, some, some maybe should just in your packet. Any questions on that? Our commission, there is no meeting. Public Works, the Department, you're in?
You have a tag for the moment, you have something in there. I thought all the tenants, is that the first time you went? So, we've got a lot of company, you know, you bring, uh, private events, private cars. I think it's an eight foot fence by three or four lines. So we left in that area. The two options, I think, I'll go with entry country later, your better, right? Um, it's a matter of if you prefer the, um, composite fencing or metal fencing. I guess there's a chance that I'll see your group without reference composite or metal or, um, heavy. The composite is thirty-nine dollars, eight hundred and twenty-seven, and the metal is fifty-three dollars, six hundred and forty-four.
Okay, and, uh, um, and the safety, aye? And, and if those are cemented? And they're, what's the size of cement? They look like two and a half? Two point four?
Three and a half.
Uh, the cement.
How deep is it?
And you know how large is the post is that?
Oh, uh, I don't have that deep, I mean, but I've got it before.
Well, it looks a bit better than that.
Maybe a bit like that.
Now, is this a completely that, or is it women more through or is it stopped?
Oh.
Okay.
Uh, we've seen what the history is on the composite, it's hard to do on heavy, and then...
Do you remember?
So when they were building the place in Palomar, I asked the workers out there, their thoughts on the two. Um, they said they thought a lot of the composite, I mean, they have, um, a good history with those, they've lasted a long time, they've never replaced any as again, so, uh, those are good. I asked them both the metal ones compared to that, and he didn't have any experience with it, he hasn't put it in yet.
So, suspecting.
Could take some abuse from, from either side.
Yeah. Yeah, like the metal we, we did ended up in, uh, yeah.
Now, is it composite similar to the one down by Ticker? Or, or is that more of a plastic, the one we're doing?
That's more of a plastic.
Uh-huh, that's more plastic.
Yeah.
Yeah. So would you recommend the composite as the top?
I would recommend the composite for, there's a known history of it, and it's cheaper.
And what, what's the difference between hiring, if you do hire the equipment?
Um, it gets a lot more expensive hiring equipment because then you have to have an engineer get involved with the engineer trends and present to spare out.
Okay.
Most of the current life, it would really be intimidating.
Yes.
Hiring the iron and all of that.
But it, it's a split between residential and in, in access, uh, commercial or whatever you want to call it.
Is there any difference as far as, like, the noise contamination between, I guess, the composite and the metal?
Yeah, I don't know anything for sure, but that would mind something.
I'm sure the truck on the ceiling is running back there, it would appreciate this time.
Yeah. Biggest thing to help with the sound is coming up here, moving the salt. And it's either way against the moving the salt, then the other side of the job. That's a three in the morning, you're loading up trucks and they get the headlights and the windows, it's a bad one.
You, you mean, uh, cementing, you're going to move those too?
Yeah.
All those? So that would be part in there? Does it, isn't that...
Yeah.
You said...
You want the, the fences here, or you want them?
Yeah.
I'm making sure you move the, the composite fences.
I was just inquiring, is there a, is there a?
Yeah. Uh, they said they could get to it right away, they wanted to. So I'm hoping that it doesn't really.
What's that, rocky and?
Well, it's frozen, otherwise it probably just don't really go springing.
But it's not even an oil, uh, frozen, I mean, frozen solid is also if it's rocky and word of mouth, telling the jail rock.
Yeah, they didn't have issues with the
They didn't?
The clean, the dry as well with the hours.
Okay. Uh, Norris, as far as you motion, do you want any food from five to two sixteen?
Probably, yeah.
Cause that's what we discussed. Correct, can I ask you?
I don't know, is it just, does it all of that come from two sixteen? The rent transfers some money into two sixteen and two seven, so it should be fine.
But I want to make sure there is enough money there, cause that's where we said it was gonna come from.
Yeah, there is an available.
Okay. And will make that transfer from two seventeen to two sixteen to make sure there is available?
Yeah, the council has to do a motion to make that transfer.
Okay.
So we need to complete this motion on the.
I'll send that Norris's motion.
Thank you.
And then it's two sixteen. Okay, any further discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Uh, I'll entertain a motion to transfer the first part of two seventeen into two sixteen. So.
How far?
Any discussion on that? The reason that is, the second part of two seventeen is all designated for recreational park. And that's why having this in there, it's hard to keep the balance and how we're at. And also by putting this in there, the council made the decision to keep seventy-five thousand dollars in for maintenance in two sixteen, in the new two sixteen. So this helps get that out so we know where we're at on keeping that seventy-five thousand that we want for maintenance. So that's the reason why. Any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Away. And Carrie, anything else?
Yep, one more. Um, let me get a picture of it in there maybe. Um, so it's in the public worker budget to, uh, have a salt shed built this year, twenty twenty. It's budgeted around the twenty-five thousand. Does it have a map on your picture? I'm looking at something in the north east corner of the shop.
You can kind of see the line.
Okay, now the north west corner of the long, uh, old guard.
The east.
On the Indian shed.
Yeah, it's dead. Oh, that's dead.
So there, um, about twenty feet of asphalt there, so. I have the next to be there already, it's just a store, but, uh, need to put in more blacktop to extend it and then, um, the steel is on government pricing and then the concrete block, uh, a material that come in eight thousand five hundred dollars over. What was budgeted, and I'm asking if that can come from the twenty on the reverse of that.
The only thing is, on that, and I talked to Tammy about that, we could take that and maybe get a budget allocation today because I want to make sure there's that seventy-five thousand maintenance and we've already transferred for the police and I actually already had permission from the donor to do that. And I know the donor has said, you know, we can transfer, but I want permission to do that. So until I see the seventy-five thousand that is at least in two sixteen to take care of the maintenance. Uh, and Tammy assured me we could do an allocation on the regular budget for that additional amount instead of taking it from the donation.
So what the council would do is they would make a motion to do a budget adjustment to this minor? Should that budget, uh, minor go over budget?
So, if you're okay with doing the shedding this year, I'll entertain a motion and then to do the line adjustment or anything above and beyond would be the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Awesome.
I have one question, Carrie. How far to the east of this shed is the private property, so there wouldn't be any no issue in the future with the noise?
Yeah, on my way.
Okay, but back, back down, another, go ahead.
Well, my, I guess the reason that we're looking to do this project is currently we store our salt sand with the county, which is goes great, quite a good deal for us, but, um, two of the last three winters, it always gets put in the same building. You know, you take the, you take it from there as you need and you keep track of how many yards we're taking each time we haul out of there. And spring comes around and all the salt sand is gone and we didn't use up our allotment, so I do think that as time goes, this will take us, so.
But, but in change for the county uh, letting us store our sheds there, we've been doing some projects for them such as sweeping, uh, sweeping cleaning and snow removal, uh, downtown on Central Avenue. So maybe we should look at the costs of the county for us to continue to do that.
There is some costs for, for coming to those.
Yes, but it's not worth the time you guys put into it. Correct?
Yeah.
So, and sometimes the council should look into that. But my question to you, Carrie, if you got it on the east side and you're back now, you're gonna be loading the truck to the, to the west, right? So do you have enough room for that, uh, loader to load it?
Yep.
Okay. But it would be going off with the blacktop to load it. You know what?
I thought they were in front of the whole circle, they're in front of the previous for the red truck stuff and the tracks.
Yes, but then, for them to back out, the, for the loader to back out, they have to turn.
You could back straight up and then load that truck and then we're also extending that with the money here after they extend the asphalt for the sheds.
Okay, are we gonna be able to get that asphalt in the end of this year?
You can come on one day.
Oh, okay.
Well, we're, there's a savings, I mean, the town, maybe they're into the savings for downtown.
And then, can you literally go? Or are you gonna have to load outside and then push it to stand and do that shit? Cause most sheds are high, where you back the truck right in and then this one, don't look high enough.
That, that's, I couldn't get like the heck of dimensions on the picture, but ours are gonna be twenty feet high.
Oh, it is, okay. Cause if you look at this picture, it doesn't look high enough.
It would certainly have it, but very much, I mean, we mix it up both sides, we put it in there one time and the loader, then we're taking.
Okay. Any other questions or any comments from Carrie or questions from the council? And you got a good motion and where to take that money around? With a, and we're okay with that, uh, can I? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Motion carriers. Okay, going on to public work, uh, no. Anything else, Carrie?
I guess I would, I cut this plaster down on the third freezing morning, uh, two weeks ago. Was it eighty degrees next week? You want, I don't know, maybe it's worth the time to turn it back on? A couple days, I don't know.
How much was it to shut it down?
It's about a hour to turn it back on, about an hour.
I would say you make a call. I wouldn't make you shut it off, cause it did three times already, did it?
I wouldn't, plastic didn't go on.
Oh, that's fair.
Well, the heat's walking all the way inside.
Yeah.
Just, just hang on the watch, Carrie, and maybe you can make a decision. Cause that's the only thing that made me pay for our last cost, maybe those are.
Let it go where?
Yeah. Okay, if I have any questions, no questions? Uh, okay, moving on to the COVID, cares act funding, economic relief, grant, grant applications. Uh, that is in your packet, Tammy and I went over that today. A couple of changes, uh, on the eligibility and how, you, how do you re-roll that one?
Eligibility, uh, it consists of all the criteria and follow the government's executive order as there are links to the.
That's under, on the first page, see where it is? Because it.
It replaces March first with the governor's executive order.
So that, that's one on there and then, uh, the same thing on page two on individual, March one and is being replaced and Tammy's taking care of that. And, uh, we also talked about, uh, if the delinquent, uh, underneath the grant, uh, third paragraph, the product can be used for a rent mortgage, rent payments payroll for permanent employees, it's working capital and operational costs such as inventory and in language utility bills, but some of these I couldn't find, cause I hadn't read. Or maybe it was in, uh, maybe before you sent it out, the packet. It, it, it read that it couldn't be used if, uh, by an individual, if they owe the city money to pay off the city money and that might have been in that first packet that you sent it out. So I, 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 I think that it can't be used for money that they already owe the city. They didn't have that.
No, I mean, I, I couldn't be honest, I was thinking like number three under that wouldn't go to requirement debt and the door, because the government, you can't get any money owing yet at the very first, anything on it?
Right.
Okay. I know I read it someplace. Oh, I, okay. Decred on all tax bills and charges due to the city from February first, two thousand twenty for private, okay? But do we want that all these language deals could be paid by?
Look, the, 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 the one that one would be getting approved, that it can't be used, they did not have the eligible rating if they owe the city money yet at the very first. They're hoping when you design it, all people, you know, common.
It says, one of these has to have to be current.
Yeah. That they have to return, yeah.
I'm not gonna be right.
Okay. So you guys are okay there? Okay, and then?
On the bottom, he can, uh, change his, so this number two or two, you know, add.
Oh, yeah.
On what page? Uh, it copies two where the bottom, probably because of the, probably March first, four, one and a half, December the. Oh.
Wow, Miss that. Okay. So any questions on the guidelines? Do you want, uh, uh, motion to adopt these guidelines?
We also discussed the grant application.
Yeah, I know, but do you want to send a motion for the?
No, to the token cabinet.
Okay, okay. Then, then moving on to the grant applications and Tammy and I discussed this today. I think there should be two different applications, one for individuals and one for businesses. Cause really, if you tie it in there and look at, this one's good for businesses, but this takes very few things out for individuals. And then my other question was, and maybe, I don't know how this works, individuals applying for the mortgage or rental assistance fund, that's what they can apply for? Morgues, uh, rental assistance, who gives that a check? Is the landlord giving that a check or do we determine that the renter gives that a check? Well, it is, I, I, it's another page. Down here, it says individuals applying for no mortgage, so they can apply for the mortgage or rental assistance.
Yeah, that's like a qualifying spenders or.
Okay, so when I come in, I wasn't able to pay my rent. And I said, as an individual, I want to pay, I, I want the grant to pay my rent, okay? Who gets that check? Is it the landlord or do you give it to the person? See, I've probably given it to the renter, not to the landlord.
I, under the terms of this and any of the other, oh, they're gonna have to pay you some documents that I send for this and the money is received by the applicant and they are entrusted to use the money to pay whatever it is they need to pay. Um, whether it's rent or facilities or whatever, it's a qualifier for the fund. I, I, I'm not aware of any of these.
So how, how do you control if they don't use it? Then there's the Mississippi, Carrie.
I think it's, I, I don't know, any of the city, I don't know any cities that, that might manage that. Of requires a sort of confirmation that what they indicate, they.
They have to give confirmation to how they did it, so they would have to return the receipt that they paid. Cause that's part of the thing on the back, down, uh, no, in the, in the recording, on page three of the recording, that they have to report how the money and show how the money was used by the guidelines.
Correct, but I believe that's what it's on, businesses does like with the grant system, not on individual?
Am I?
Yeah, I, I'm wrong.
It, it number thirteen, did any?
Oh, yeah.
It just states as they should describe how they're gonna use the, the order grant fund. There isn't language in there for them to return any particular receipts to the city.
Well, I think we have to prove, cause I know the Lurgic five, they had, had, all, anybody that had from the Pope, the Lurgic five, my, from the Roman Community Foundation had, uh, sent out a report that they got so much bad.
And that's what the businesses have.
Yeah, but I think individuals should have to do that too.
Is the county doing individuals?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Um, I, I, I have to look, but I, I believe the county is doing, um, grants for individuals' earnings and small businesses, but if you give me a minute, I can, I can, I can work to do that.
Well, when I talk, like, when we talk mostly about businesses, so I'm not sure about individuals.
Wouldn't the natural consequence be eviction, losing your home if you don't use the money accordingly?
But okay, saving somebody's families. What truth is, do they have to have that? Maybe they paid and it's. And got a loan for or whatever, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe they're not today, but they say, hey, I, 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 they really hurt me. And not being able to do other things, you know? I don't know. It's just as loud when we put the applications together.
It's difficult to figure where, um, yes, the county is doing grants to individuals' payments.
And so it should have been counted too, because I checked out their.
Maybe my little.
Yeah.
Yeah. Today, it's a lot of same requirements within the application as far as the qualifying expenses, the qualifiers, the qualifying for the.
Okay.
Um, it was the.
The one thing that we, we just needed to maybe clarify that he and I talked about was too that we need to make sure on this application, they must live in the city limits. So we would add that to it as well. Otherwise, we don't want someone, uh, the conversation when somebody works at some place and they're outside the city. But they claim they live in the city, but still get county assistance, you know, the city grants.
Mm-hmm.
And the county there, so. The, Mike Winner and I had that conversation, so I would make sure that nobody can try to get over rent.
But from that standpoint. Can a business? Say that, say I have you work someplace near town. And I'm only working ten hours instead of my forty. And I'm not. Getting unemployment. Can I? Have my business saying that is expressed and pay that to me?
Not because they're not the applicants.
Well, no, if, if, if the business is there. On the business section, can they claim that there are workers that don't even live in the town? Aren't working full time? And had to have a reduction in hours because of the toll and the, and the closing of. Maybe the, uh, one of the Harris laws or whatever. You know, can they claim that one of the chairs was not busy and that person was outside of town?
So wouldn't that person's appointment in his hometown?
Uh, I, I don't know. But those are questions that are going to have to answer.
Is there consequences from mistake in this appropriation of the use of these funds?
Yes. We, we have to give it all back and, and as a city. And any inappropriate funds that we will be audited for. Uh, our public record. And any funds that. Are given out. If we be viewed by anybody because their public record. And if the, if they were audited and somebody says, okay, that, that business was, that person's description got it. And the state can audit that and say, no, that person's description got it. Or that business description got it, because they, they, they need the guidelines. Just like if we spent something. That's outside the guidelines, you know?
So where does our responsibility end with? The funds that. After we review an application and release the funds, are we responsible for what happens to the funds after it's in the hands of the person that gets the grant?
Yeah. If we have to get it back.
No, we're not.
I think if once we release it.
Once we release those grants, it's not an individual.
But if we get audited on how we spend our funds.
Well, we're going to be audited if we didn't do the eligibility correctly.
That's what I'm saying.
They can audit a private citizen and let him spend it.
No, but they can audit how we.
Yeah, that's where we.
And that's what I'm saying.
So it, it sounds like we, like our responsibility of the city is having a grant application that covers our portion of responsibility.
Yeah.
Uh, meeting the act and, and what we need to do before releasing those funds.
Right.
Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Uh, on the applications, so. Tammy will draw up a new application. Along with Damian. For a individual and one of the businesses. So are we okay? Follow the guidelines and set up those applications? I will undertake the motions to do this. Oh, wait, wait, do we have them? You are intending to, with, and by, with, and you.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll undertake the motions for that.
So move. Second.
Any further discussion on that? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, now, one question I have on the grant of those applications. I would rather not, and for the privacy of anybody asked for it, I'd rather not debate them at a public. Hearing or, or at a council meeting. So I'd like to set up some type of. Uh, board. To look over those applications and go from there. Is there any comment of that? Damian, if we take somebody from the economic development board. Somebody from the Rumberg Community Foundation. The president of the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Tammy. Myself. And somebody from, uh, Rumberg Community, did I have any else?
I. Well, people, I'm not sure why.
Who's going to review these?
Every. I, I, I've prepared a draft of documents in four of my city's municipal offices, if they so shows. And. At the county level and at the local level, typically it's the administrative head. That would review the application, not in a large municipality, large city, maybe you have that, uh, delegated to a number of other people. But in a city where you're dealing with pretty small population size. Um, especially when time is somewhat of a necessity. Um, it's usually just that administrative head, if you want to have. A board created or number of individuals appointed. Can. Problem that I foresee is the timing, the, um, entity, these individuals who are not affiliated directly with the city making decisions as well. Where city grant agencies will go are two, two concerns that I guess that have. Um, so my, if the council wants to do that. You can carefully declare who you're appointing as far as like. A person's own business entity, person's own necessity, person's necessity, and are they required? All parties to keep presence and determine everything that's happening, I mean, these are just. Kind of concerns that would be my head, and I, I think about this. All I can tell you is, is all the other governmental entities are, are usually. City administrator, city manager, assistant clerk, mayor, whatever, whoever the guy is. Um, if there is an economic development board here, um, so they're being appointed to certain areas, so I don't know if it would be here. What would be best?
But I don't know that. Being in violations of the open meeting laws. I have one and two council members.
Why don't you just have myself and one council member?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, Dave, you're already on the EDC and you're already working with us with the EDC law.
Because it's just answering questions, there's no judgment involved.
Yeah, I guess. You're going to judge if you're going to give it to them.
Well, they have to be eligible.
Yeah. But you might say no to some of them, or if someone's asked to.
Well, that's why Dave and I, I don't, I think we both can make an agreement. I don't think any lot of people would want that.
Well, you could bring in any one of, any other one, council members.
Yeah, because they're available, I mean, if, if Cory's available, if Lindsay's available, I mean. Dave, I mean, and Norris, indeed, I mean. I don't, I don't think it needs to be a big process for something so simple.
Well, I, I don't think it's that simple when you're dealing with a public. Tammy and. I, I'm trying to get the people that know the community. And have given to the community, you know, to do this and knows. What's going on in the community, you know?
But it's pretty cut and dry, if they all turn it in, they qualify. They can. Do you foresee somebody that qualifies is not getting grant money?
Uh-huh.
Do you foresee somebody that qualifies not getting grant money?
Yeah. Because then, once this gets out there, there's going to be more act, just like scholarships at the school. But this is grant, this isn't the loan. From my East Seven Electric that we got in the economic loan fund that. Economic development's where we're at. When this gets out there and that, that, this grant is available. And I think the guidelines were nothing less than a thousand and nothing more than twenty thousand. And how much are we going to set aside? As, as far as accounts or what's the maximum of that COVID money? That is going to be available for, because we have to set aside. I think the council set aside, I hear you say.
Uh, at least, there's, that was part of the reason why I think with Tammy, they contacted me about their concerns about. The bill of quarters seven and the, the ten percent requirement, so I'm advising cities, even though. It's available, but it's not that bill, that provision, but their concern about lives for the city, it's safe to. I, I'm urging all my cities to set aside at least ten percent. And after you deal with your internal expenditures and things of that, then you're fine, you can sure that we have set aside at least ten percent of the overall. For the grant, which is not going to profit for anything else.
So ten, ten percent, when we.
What's the dollar amount?
Twenty-one thousand dollars or eight hundred dollars?
That's the ten percent.
Ten and seven.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's a very small amount. I mean, depending on how many people.
See. Because I, I think there's a lot more people hurting here in town.
That's the system, the.
Yeah, I know, yes.
And the people in the island can also survive out of town.
Can't they?
They can, I do believe that county, uh, application does require applicants to. Apply for all other local grant programs in vision to that or as a progress, so if they apply here and were denied. Then in theory, they have the county's bet on it. Now, I don't know what, I believe the county. I have the template for the county, I don't know what they finalize as far as who's overseeing the, the administration of the grant, I don't know if it's that. I don't think it's the county's free to have it, right?
It would be Mike Winner.
Mike, okay. Oh, you know, yes, I'm sorry, I did see that, yes. So again, that person is the one that's responsible for administering the program.
Okay. Okay, so then, from that standpoint. How about the townships?
Townships, uh, they, I believe, have to go to the county. Because they, I, I think, depending on the size, they can, um. Delect to try and receive normally, but they don't qualify, then they can apply right to the counties. And that's what I think ten percent of the county's concerned about how far we can, that part would go with and affect them.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, would you be interested in hearing comments from, uh, anybody in attendance?
Yeah, I, I'd stand in the hands, yes.
Yeah.
I just, looking at this application and, um. Having so many people to approve it. I mean, you're giving personal information about your business, and if you're going to have a panel of six, seven, or eight people, I would have concern for that. I mean, to me, it should be held close to the vest and, um, minimal people looking at that application.
Would you have the same concern with two, uh, city employees?
Like I said, hold it close. Because this is a lot of personal information that they are giving. You know, so I would have concern in that.
And I should probably mention, to make clear, you know, data coming into the city is, it's a beautiful data.
Yes, I, I already said that.
Yeah, we have a responsibility to ensure that data is not.
Yeah.
You know, that, that would be released to the proper.
But didn't you say that people could come in and request this information? Or no?
Uh, yes. They, they can request.
Said I would have great cause for.
No, they can request to got, uh. They can't get, uh, personal. Information, but they can request to got, uh. Grant.
Well, I.
Why would that be public?
I would have to, I would have to review the data to determine whether or not, where it fell within the, uh, original data.
Open, open, uh.
Yeah, what's.
Information. Okay, look into that. So then, with that and moving on. What I'd like to do is have. One council member, Tammy and myself. Do this reviewing, so is there a council member that would like to?
I think Tammy's idea is better, Norris, you already said it, but it's one of us. Because if it comes up and I'm, you know, Cory's down wherever I had a cross country meeting, whatever, and now we've got to wait.
So are you okay with, I mean, I.
Unless, unless it's just one of us at random. But I don't really want to assign.
Whoever's the main goal is what you're saying.
Because Tai, Tai would be. Yeah.
But, but, but if you have a random one. Then I have a problem. With. Being you one random name. And Cory another random name, because they don't know what guidelines you use compared to.
Guidelines better be that application.
Yes, they're the same thing.
But then, yeah, it, it would always help me have a comment.
And, and right, but I would think, oh, if I, one council member would define the deadline and all the applications that you can have at a certain time. We don't really have to give the other, like, the one item because they're the deadline. I mean, anything after that is classic deadline. And now.
No, I'm sure doing the business go.
But so you're going to have to wait till they're all in.
So they know what you have for money.
So you know what you have for money?
So then it is just one meeting.
So let, let's have this.
And I would say one, assign one council member and Tammy to write the city the information that's put out there in the mail.
Interview all grant applications at the same time.
So are you okay with Tammy and I?
Is there any other council member that?
You?
I'd rather not, just because I have another meeting right now, so it's not going to work very well for me.
So it'll be Tammy and I, I'll undertake a motion for that. So move.
One second.
Any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So that should finish that one, right?
Hang on. I want to go back to one thing that you mentioned, the, the technical reporting. Um, on page, bottom page three, we were discussing reporting and I talked about.
Yeah.
The businesses having to report.
Yeah.
If you feel as though it's important that that responsibility is handed to anybody who applies, sort of the individual of, of business. We can change the language in that version to change it from business owners to applicants. Uh, so that's more, if anybody's applying for the funding, would be responsible for reporting as requested by Tammy or whoever. If, if that would satisfy your concern, that could be done.
Yeah.
You want, I think a motion you make that should be appropriate.
Yeah, okay. You following what he said, Tammy?
Yeah.
And you'll work on that with Tammy?
I, I, I think that's the, the couple having the motion text, uh, that, that came in the, the application material, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll undertake a motion.
How many that motion?
One second. Any further discussion on that motion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Fire Department, Jeff Seig.
Okay, I'm going to start off with, we apply for grant for a new SCBA's. And we are awarded a hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents. And, uh, our part of the non-federal amount is six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, thirty-three cents. So we got a total of a hundred and forty-three. So we got a total of a hundred and forty three thousand, five hundred dollars to spend. So we got three bids. And we actually aren't gonna get twenty two SCBA's, that was what FEMA came up with from what our trucks could possibly hold. So we already have two of these new ones. We're gonna go, we're hoping to go with these MSA G ones, because we have two of them already, but we're gonna get eighteen of them. So the total price instead of a hundred and eighty one thousand, whatever it was.
Which 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 paper are you looking at?
The the emergency response solutions is the company.
Okay, so I can get rid of all of that, Alex?
Yep.
And I, and on the emergency?
Yep, so the total would have been, with everything we were to get, was like a hundred and eighty one five. But since we're cutting back, we're not getting those four units, they'll be around a hundred and fifty grand. So we'll have to come up with a few more, a few thousand dollars more from our reserve fund. Which we have money in there for them, um.
But I don't see that number on here.
It's it's when you figure it all out, you know.
Oh, okay.
It didn't actually give the numbers, it's when you figure it all out. Because there was things that we added in, and we didn't, didn't do a schedule portal, so. But when you figure it all out, it's gonna be around a hundred, actually a hundred and forty eight thousand.
And that grant came from one, where?
FEMA.
FEMA.
And they're paying a hundred and thirty six thousand.
Hundred and thirty six.
What is that total, like, forty million, a hundred and thirty six? Big time?
Okay, the total that FEMA's giving us is one thirty six, 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 and sixty seven cents. So we have to contribute at least six, eight hundred and thirty three dollars, thirty three cents, but. We're gonna go over that, because this was a project projected of a hundred and forty three five, but we're gonna end up being over that. But we have money in our reserve fund for it, so. Um, so I'm here asking you to approve that.
Now, the reserve fund, is that in the reserve?
Apparatus fund.
Apparatus fund, not in any, uh.
They only have a reserve equipment fund.
Yeah, or equipment fund, yeah.
Okay, equipment fund, rather than truck fund, or is?
It's all the same thing.
They're all the same.
Yeah.
Is that gonna get you in trouble with reserve down the line?
Not when we're putting thirty thousand dollars in a month from.
Ah?
Not when we're putting thirty thousand dollars again within there a month, so.
Oh, okay. So, who who? Who wrote this grant? You guys?
Uh, we hired a lady to write it, and Tom Christensen, one of our deputy chiefs. Got her all the information she needed, and he he works very well, he's working on another one, we're applying for a. For a actual rescue truck, so we can alleviate it instead of.
See, I thought you were looking at a rescue truck.
Right, so we're gonna apply for a grant, so then we can alleviate two trucks and have one.
So, but if you don't get that grant, where does that rescue truck sit?
We're not gonna do anything then, but.
Unless you get the grant.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure that you're not coming back for reserves for that.
Nope.
Okay.
Well, they do have quite a balance in reserves, so.
Yeah, I I've seen that. So, uh. And and that money is okay, so I'll entertain a motion for them to go ahead with this?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Any further discussion on that? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Resolution. What are you doing, I have a, that resolution?
Twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
Right after the part of response?
Resolution, uh, twenty, oh, here I go. Resolution wasn't up on top, that's why I missed it. Okay, uh, resolution twenty fifteen, uh, well, we gotta fill in some blanks.
So I'm gonna turn this over to Sean Kadelbeck, he's our resident president.
Oh, okay.
You can ask him both questions, but he's the guy that wrote that, so.
So I didn't know the resolution number, I had to fill this out, so we, uh, were requesting approval for seven hundred dollars. We had a cost analysis from PERA. Um, that puts us at a surplus at a hundred and thirty percent. Um, as the order indicated, it's a state funded, um, PERA return pension plan, so. Um, the purpose of the increase is the hopes of retaining some firefighters for a period of time, say five years till they're vested. And, uh, that's a huge value to the fire department, to have that experience and that incentive to make the five years and hopefully fall beyond, so.
It costs us a lot of money to train people, that's.
Yeah, and it's just hard to, all of a sudden, you you send them through five, six thousand dollars worth of training. And all of a sudden, they're only on for two, three years, and. And you know, if we figure, maybe we can give a raise on our retirement stuff, that maybe they'll. You know, decide and stick around and and utilize that training that we spent on and. And, um. And keep the market stronger and a little bit, a little more knowledge and experience too, you know, we get all these young guys, it's hard to. Hard to. To. Have a lot of experience, so.
When when you're looking at, which figure are you looking at on here, going from, what are you at now per year?
We're at three thousand dollars per year.
You're at three thousand dollars per year?
Correct.
And you're asking for?
Seven hundred dollars.
Thirty seven hundred.
Thirty seven hundred?
Thirty seven hundred.
Yeah. Okay, so you're asking to go to that thirty seven one. Okay, my my question's on that is. Okay, somebody's been in there ten years. Do they get thirty seven hundred for a year one? Or do they start at year eleven and get thirty seven? And?
No, if you're on fee, and we do a raise, that's when the you start, so.
See, I have a problem with that.
You know, it doesn't, it's the same, that's how it works, I mean, it doesn't matter, it it's just the way it is.
Because if the, if the wage is a door at my place, that's like saying, hey, I want that wage one year back, uh, back to the day I started.
So when PERA does the cost analysis, when PERA does the cost analysis, this is, they actually figured that in for the members to go by years.
Yeah, I know.
So they actually expect them to.
I know that's a big issue, but that that ends up being a lot of money. Uh. Because somebody that's been in ten years, that's another seven thousand dollars. Uh, for ten years. That's raising, right now, the ten years they put in, that's raising their seven thousand dollars. Correct?
Correct.
For ten years. That's pretty good, you're jumping to my retirement, or in the year.
Can I ask you, remember?
Yeah, and and one thing that I just wanna note too, that their benefit increased from twenty five hundred. Uh, to three thousand, and that became affected in, um, one one of twenty nineteen.
Again, back to what he was talking about, circle back to what Jesse was talking about, as far as the experience. Our goal is hopefully to ask you to, for ten years, because that's the most knowledgeable people. When I'm when I'm heading into a fire, I want your ten guy to tell me, what do I save because in those buildings, so. Uh, I would hope they would, that's an incentive to make them go to ten years and have an increase. I like it, twenty years, thirty years, no?
If it's, if it's, if I can be employed, I mean, if you're gonna retain that, there's a percentage in cover of this. I would be inclined to do so, I mean, I would be trying to train someone in every year.
Oh, no, I totally agree with that.
I mean, I think in the, and it's gonna, you could rather, listening to that.
But how many, if if you take all the people that are in there and, uh. Okay, any anybody beyond seven, and you had every number in there beyond seven by their names? How many did you total, you come up with, I mean, a hundred total years? You got an eight, you got a nine, a nine, a thirty eight, a sixteen, a eleven? A seven, a six, a twenty one, an eight, a nine, and twenty one?
But do you have another one, other thing? If it works out, you have to, you don't get the whole monthly at the twenty year fee.
I know, okay, I know.
So really, you're not getting.
Oh, you don't have that.
You don't, you don't have a hundred.
It starts out at five years, you get forty, four percent, and then you get a four percent every year after the twenty, and then you get the total. A thirty seven hundred.
Okay, that makes a big difference.
Okay, that's, when you're born, I'm like, I gotta fix that, right?
Oh, okay.
So anybody with over twenty years will get the full.
Okay, okay, okay. But then that person, argument to that, Jim, that person that's back over twenty, and we're out too many years, so I'm saying.
But but the point of it, when the more you raise, is it? The longer some guys will stay, and we have, like, 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 Nelson is is an example, he's almost at the twenty years. He'll stick around because he's looking at more dollars. If it's a smaller amount, most people fail out at twenty years, because it's.
Okay, now, those those that are deferred will not get that.
No, no, those won't. They get whatever is behind their name.
Whatever's behind their name right now.
Yeah, so like, those would be, you know, like, FNB would say twenty four hundred a year for. For, uh, for five years, and so you take forty four percent of the twenty four hundred, times five.
Twenty four hundred, is this mass?
Well, if you've had twenty years, he only has five, so he gets forty four percent of that twenty four hundred.
Then 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 I'm better off with Jim explaining that. Okay, and like what Tammy says. Do you really want seven hundred? Because it went from what, in two thousand nineteen, or?
Twenty five to three thousand.
To three thousand, so it took a five hundred dollar jump.
Again, we're we're trying to adjust the surplus that we have right now, our our assets versus surplus. Our, I'm sorry, our assets versus liability, we're trying to balance that out, because we're way over going there, you know, and they're coming, so.
Part of that is, I think we got a bad analysis when we went to PERA, because. Because if we should have done a raise and we went to PERA right away.
Before we actually put it in the.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they told us we've been putting more in there, and then in two thousand eighteen, we did another one. And then then they said we were funded at a hundred and sixty eight percent. Well, we should, we should have done a raise and we put it in the PERA then.
Now, was that a problem also here? Because I remember Craig complaining that it wasn't being generated.
Right, now, like I said, it's it's now, right, but at that time, I mean, you know, it doesn't make any difference now. It was, it shouldn't have been that far off when we went in the PERA, they should have got as close as that.
Okay.
So right now, financially, there's no reason we can't.
There's there's reliability with the city.
Right, we just have a ball.
A hundred and thirty one or a hundred and thirty seven percent?
Well, and and also, you know, this is completely volunteers, you know, and what they had to pay for it, you know?
So we need a resolution?
Well, this is a.
We need a motion? A motion?
Uh, yeah. But but we have to fill in that, those spots. On the amount.
Seven hundred, is what we recommended?
Well, no, yeah. So that goes into thirty seven hundred?
Yeah, the thirty seven hundred.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that your motion? From thirty, from. From thirty to thirty seven?
Yeah.
I mean, uh, three thousand. To three thousand seven hundred per year of anybody over. For, uh, according to those guidelines.
Yep.
But they have to have it in five years.
Yep.
And you believe this will be incentive enough to retain, uh, or?
I think it'll definitely help. And I'm not saying it's gonna be perfect, but this is, it's a very, everybody's really busy. You know, and it's hard to get fire because they donate their their time and their effort, you know? Like like now, we had a call in middle of a meeting with Craig, was like, leaving right now.
Well, and I was thinking with that. In in the coming years, it's not only fighting fires, they have education they gotta go through, and they they need every. And and we do pay you for the meetings.
Yeah.
And we pay you for fire costs, but it's minimal of what they they do for the community. And I'm more individual, I have a dynamic in my years, you know?
So is your motion thirty seven hundred?
One second.
Any further discussion? All the papers are motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Thank you, I heard, um, the department.
Did you do? Okay, now, moving on to. Uh, Fire Department, we, uh, well, that's the next one, that's the. Uh, we, what's on the, uh?
Oh, one one thing, sorry, I forgot.
Yeah.
Um, the twenty sixth of September, we are everyone else, north of Bob, so if anybody would like to come and see us train that day, get a hold of them. I mean, it's 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 quite an event, and then we'll start around eight o'clock in the morning, so if there's anything you guys wanna come watch. Or or see anything, and all of them, you know, okay? September twenty sixth.
Uh, along with, uh, Jesse. Uh. The old fireman joke, we lost the little, we saved based.
Well, you gotta save something.
Okay.
But then they start making wood base, so then I feel.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Uh. Moving on, the next one is the liquor store post for a sliding door.
And that's a brief, the COVID.
Uh, entertain a motion?
No. One second.
Did you touch on it? I I I have a problem with this one. I think that we could take it at fifteen thousand and then help our presses, and it's better than the handling of sliding door. Where you can walk up, and if you're afraid of the cobra, you can hit your elbow on the. Thing coming in, and I was looking over. Some of the things that the county is spending theirs on. And I I think there's a lot more need in businesses. Local businesses that could do some. And have lost money than our liquor store needing sliding glass doors.
Could this be held tabled until we find out what we end up picking off the grass, and then?
How long would you have to, probably by November fifteen?
Well, turn that down to the grass?
Yeah, November fifteenth.
Is it the same day?
Yeah, well, I I I would like to at least take, uh, Dave's suggestion to table this. Uh, till we see what the grants and what comes in and what's left over.
Yeah, if it comes down to, I I'd love to have sliding glass doors up there, but if it comes down to that, or someone staying in business, it's a no rating, I mean.
Right. So is your motion to table this? Is there a second I'm taking on this?
I'll second it.
And it, well, there's no discretion on table.
I just wanted to see, enough time to get it done. We have to approve it that month.
No.
Yeah, it would be enough time to do it. To do what?
To get the door.
Uh.
I know, I'm.
According to Robert's rules, there's no discretion on a table. According to Robert's rules, there's no discussion on a table, and a motion is debated the second. Either we vote it down or not table it, and take it immediately off the table, or we table it now, and so if we want a discussion, we have to vote no on the table. So, if you want more discussion, you must vote no on the table. So, all in favor of tableing, say yes. All in favor of not tableing, no? No, no, okay, now it's off the table, it's bad car. So, more discussion.
Okay, well, that tells me that if you don't pass it tonight, it won't happen, that's a norm, I don't hold.
And another thing we need, I don't, I don't know, on needing it rather than table it.
I don't, I like the idea, Adam, but I just don't like the timing, but I found it hard to believe that if we approved it and it forward.
They could probably just, uh, ahead of time.
Yeah, or if we said sorry, if we can't get it done at that time, then it's gonna not get the job, I bet they'd find time. I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry, they'll see them, possibly, if they're here, they're, uh, heard from county, I mean, so you can't find a glass anywhere in a hundred.
I got an idea.
Well, that is.
You know, it's just what's happened in cities, so there was no glass available.
So.
And if it was really critical, we have fifteen thousand liquor store.
Huh?
We have fifteen thousand in the liquor store, it's not critical.
If it's critical.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, I'm really nervous, I think that you could have done money on hand and for brands. You should know that it's, according to the man who uses the rules, they've got sanitizing those doors. Right, and that's a problem. Numerous times, it's, it's costing wages to do nothing, and it's, you know, even if, even if people use their elbow one, hit the button, we're still gonna wash the door. Correct. Sanitizing doors, but it's not, just because of the chemical.
So.
I think it would be, if, like you say, it would be a nice thing, if the customer's coming out, and quite often, very, something heavy, you know, and, uh, to not have to even, you know, use your elbow on the door or whatever, would be an advantage.
But once the COVID's over?
Yeah, it's still an advantage.
I know, it is a bad, but.
You could just approve it to be expanded out of the liquor store.
Right, I was just gonna say, so let's just, not approve it, as a COVID expense.
So, your motion would be to approve it?
No, no, we have a motion on the floor to spend COVID money for this, that's the motion of that.
To not or to be seconded?
Right now, the motion is to spend, we tabled the motion, we brought that motion back, so we have to give you that motion. Everyone do not want the money to come out of COVID.
Then just one, one of the motions.
Well, listen to me, one motion, if you were gonna do now, and then decide if we wanna do a different element, or if we wanna table. Here, no table, I'm gonna call the motion, that's on the floor, and that is to use COVID money for this project. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. No, no. Okay, now, does anybody else want to make a motion, and at this time, do you use money, or do you think it's a disaster?
I would make a motion that, uh, that we approve, using liquor store funds to do this, and I think if it's possible to do it at this time, and I think they deem that it's, uh, we.
Not that they deem, if we deem.
Well, well, there are recommendations.
Yeah.
There are recommendations, yeah. If there are, you're probably the recommendation, I don't think, yeah.
There would be nice, so, so that's your motion. Okay, discussion on that.
So, and I'm going back to the, is probably going backwards, but if they can't get doors anyhow, there was really no reason to talk about it, which couldn't be done, right?
These contractors, that they're sick of leaving them on, so.
Good, that's, that's good, that's, I heard of this.
Yeah, maybe these are already production, yeah, they're available, but the pain or not.
Okay, now, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here, just a while ago, the council voted on our levy. There's sixteen thousand dollars that is pending, and they could have took off our levy, like transfers deferred into the liquor store. So, what's more important, having sliding glass doors at the liquor store or raising our levy, as is the economy? Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, it was a meeting, it was by liquor store.
It could feel.
It would need to spend the COVID money.
Well, I don't know that, we had a, we had a source of money to buy it.
Yes, so why are we taking a source of money, the liquor store reserves, and putting it in to a door? When we could have took that same money and transferred into the general fund, so that we don't have to raise T people's taxes?
Our liquor store reserves for the liquor store, basically, to keep it up to date, keep it functional, vivid?
E- 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 every, every year, we pay money.
Well, we took a lot.
Yes, and we might be, that's our revenue for next year, to help out, keeping our levy low, I just figured that out.
It's pretty obvious, the residents, the community are using it, like much older women, and I think they ever have.
And I understand.
And, and, and.
It's called a three-and-a-half hour meeting.
I mean, with bigger doors, if it's not the wrong lady, even more people would use it. I, I think it's, it's, you know, it's providing an additional service to a business that's almost, it's already heavily used. And if they're generating excess revenue, I don't see a problem taking some of that revenue with them.
Is it, could it improve the revenue level of sliding glass door?
Well, that's like saying new locks, or changing the car, and.
All right. Okay. All in favor of the liquor store have sliding glass doors out of the liquor store fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Uh, Joint Powers Board. Uh, Joint Powers Board, Tammy and I met, and it's the agreement that had been done since.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, and so, we learned today, uh, how we did it last week, and those are the new changes, and Tammy and I did. We lived in a training on the floor, we discussed that, it was okay, and then on the five, the meeting will be held at such times. Do we have a motion to accept this? I need a motion to never discuss. Get the message. Who approves?
One second.
Okay, now, discussion. Uh, Tammy and I discussed on the five, that's the only thing on the front page, right, Tammy? That the meeting be held at such time and place, is the last sentence, as it may be fine and convenient to the member of the joint board, or by conference call, is the way we read it, uh, edited it, right?
Yeah.
So, that is one change that I seen in it, anybody else have any changes on page one, front page? Uh. And then, are there any other changes on nineteen?
Correct.
Because the other ones we talked about were okay, on nineteen, has it ever terminated? It said that the fund remaining in trust in the agency account shall be distributed equally between the two parties, there was nothing about the assets. So, we want to put the assets, because the joint power does own a car, and there might be other assets.
So, we would like to replace the word fund with capital.
So, those are the two changes from the original motion. Does anybody else in their reading of this? Uh, Warren Peace agenda that they have, uh, have anything that they want to change on this? Because this will go to the brain award, and then back to the joint board, et cetera. The presence of agreement between us is great, so Tammy will get a hold of the brain with the changes, we'd like to see if they may ask them too. So, I'll entertain them, motion for the amendments that Tammy and myself came up with, who?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendments? They're still waiting. All in favor of amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carriers, any, uh, discussion on the amended resolution and agreement? All in favor of it, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carriers? Uh, whole business, COVID nineteen, paid leave for employees for fourteen days, uh, continuation? This is the one that we redone last time. Uh, and I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion on it? We discussed this three times, and I think we got, I think we got it to the point that we warned it out, so any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carriers? Council convenes, uh, the ex, the ex, the ex, same, Norris?
No, uh, I would, I would just like to say again, again, this was a crazy time for the audit and the budget coinciding, uh, I'm, I'm watching Jeff and Shannon.
I'm a little tired.
Hopefully, I told her, never again will we ever have a bag like this.
I called the Warren Peace bag, and I asked her, I said, I, I took the last three days, if you have a bag like this, you need it before Tuesday.
I knew the meeting was gonna be long, and I might have.
Uh, Dave?
Uh, normally, I'd like to make a meeting lately, it's not gonna be here this year, and of course, it wasn't perfect, I should be, so that's kind of how it goes. But that's about it, I'll give it to everybody else.
Corey?
Uh, no, no.
Uh, you want to mention it to the public here of, uh, group lists?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good point, I got that. Um, the Rumber Community Foundation, once again, is having group lists, I'll look at the golf course this year, we are on Friday, October second. Typically, we're at the end of the month, we have to move it up, because of course, we're gonna be outside a good portion of it. Um, so Friday night, October second, five to eight o'clock, uh, Vicki will have assorted craft beers as always, but also some cider, some seltzers, which are popular now, um, groupery winery will be there, um, possibly some other different things we're trying to work out to have there. Uh, it's, we'll not have food, because we can't have food that way, but Wendy will have food available, um, through the golf course. Tickets are twenty, cents, twenty-five, if you don't have food, um, there'll be silent auction items, and all the funds go to a Rumber Community Foundation, which its last project was awarding over twenty-four thousand dollars in emergency fund grants to local communities, so that only goes directly to Malacca, nowhere else, so.
The Malacca area.
Malacca area, yeah, thank you.
The four pounds and six surrounding pounds, and each year, we give our grants to many things, and this is one of our bigger one reasons.
Yeah, so it's important, you hold that on, I mean, that, right, I think you've got it all figured out, so you should see something on Facebook, so you can buy tickets in advance.
Tickets are made, no danger.
Yep, definitely.
Okay, uh, Corey? Lindsay? Uh. I, I want to remind the people that I did it all over the county stuff, and I hope that they had a good turnout for their review of that local sales tax that I mentioned earlier on, uh, September twenty-ninth, and if you, I see that they use some of their COVID money, which I think is a ridiculous thing, it's thirty-eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents to buy a drone. For surveillance, but that's up to them, but even the better, I had their meeting on the fifteenth, when we asked them uh, to look at the stop sign on the first to the central, uh, and the recommendation gave to everybody, uh, it was, uh, added to the agenda.
Yeah.
But will be on the next month's agenda, if administration and the chair allows it on there. So, what is the recommendation from the county engineer to do it? And if you think our taxes are to have, just this week, the county approved four hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and twelve cents for legal fees. Those lawyers are getting rich. So, motion for adjournment?
So, move.
Second.
Uh, before I say yes, I just have one more comment, the second street's coming along good enough, that I think they're gonna be starting doing blackout even on the east side of Central where it was today, I was out there.
Yeah, you, right, I was scheduled.
Yeah, they're doing blackout, and there was a central victory.
But, but it looks like they will come go right on across, because that looks like that's ready to do.
Well, the miners giving them work, and we're out there, we've got the main thing today.
Oh, no, I, I don't know that for sure, but it looks like it's ready to go. Yeah, they, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carriers?